Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mike Rossi, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to call this regular monthly meeting to order at seven o'clock. We'll certainly call the roll.
Mike Floria?
Here.
Right here.
Right here.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
Dylan Walter?
Here.
Damian Dell?
Here.
Zach Lord?
Here.
Eddie Alberino?
Here.
Cinzia Latieri?
Here.
Bob Clark? Robert Corson?
Here.
Brian Pellegrini?
Here.
Susan Marcus?
Here.
Michael Rossi?
Here. Okay, I have two openers if I can see. I would like to see. Brian, you're next up on my list for Ellen, and then Bob, you're next, and then I'll teach you for Bob Clark. Okay? Okay. First on the agenda, Chair's comments. I really only want to say thank you to everybody for coming early for the training. I know that that puts you out, but I appreciate you being here. Okay, move on to the next item minutes. Review and approval of the February ten meeting minutes. Any comments or corrections? I have a motion, make a motion to approve the minute.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. And motion carries. Okay, next. Item four is for chief of applications. This is for Planning and zoning commission twenty-five dash two application for both zoning text amendment to section seventeen point two point twenty-nine of the zoning regulations who enables submission of independent appraisals from professional appraisers to establish the market value of structures in FEMA special flood hazard area. This is with actually our own, so I'm surprised it's under receipt, but okay.
It's just to start the procedural time.
I got it. So we are bringing this. So we need to receive it and schedule it for a public hearing.
And to that front, because it is a commission application, we did provide notice at the commission's request from the last meeting, so we have done proper public notice for this, so you can hold a public hearing this evening if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we already have going for a public.
Correct.
Yeah, I thought that we did, that's why I was confused.
Yeah, the statutory timeframes don't apply to the commission's application the same way as they do for.
Okay. So I need a motion to receive.
Make a motion to receive planning zoning twenty-five dash two application for zoning text amendment through section seventeen point two point twenty-nine of the zoning regulation, namely submission of independent appraisers from professional appraisers who establish the market value of structures in the FEMA special flood hazard areas. Okay, sorry.
Second.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. And motion carries, thank you. Okay, now we get to the public hearing. Would you please read the legal notice for the hearing?
Legal notice, the public hearing, town of Clinton and the town hall green room. The town of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM to consider the following. PZC twenty-five dash one application for zoning text amendment and the zoning map to permit affordable housing floating zone district pursuant to section twenty-one point three point two at ninety-two High Street, map forty-four, block twenty-six, lot eight A, zone R twenty, applicant Thomas A. Stevens and Associates, Inc. PZC dash twenty-five dash two application for zoning text amendment to section seventeen point two three two nine of the zoning regulations to enable submission of independent appraisals from professional appraisers to establish the market value of structures in FEMA special flood hazard areas. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. The applications and correspondence are available for public inspection at HTTCSBS, Clinton, Connecticut portal dot opengov dot com slash record slash two zero eight eight nine. Anyone requiring special accommodation to participate in the public meeting should contact the land use office at eight six zero six six nine six one three three. Michael Rossi, Chairman, Town of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much. Okay. The first item for public hearings, I've been notified the engineer is not here yet, the Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-four dash twenty-one. They requested that we move them down on the agenda. Can I have a motion to move item A to follow item C?
If I make a motion to move item A down to.
That's how these work.
Right? Go ahead. Thank you. Okay, thank you, guys. Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Right. Okay. Reorder the engine, thank you. Okay, Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash one. This is the application for a zoning text amendment to the zoning map commit in the portable housing floating zone district at ninety-two High Street. The applicant is Thomas A. Stevens and associate. I've been, we've been informed that they would like to have this one delayed until next month, so for statutory purposes, we're opening it, no?
We're actually postponing, so.
Postponing the opening.
Correct, there's a provision of notice that requires mailing to residents within five hundred feet of the proposed floating zone establishment. That mailing did not occur, and so we.
We are not opening, okay.
Well, just postpone until the, and just to be clear, it's, our next meeting is April seventh.
Okay. Okay, do you need a motion to file or is it just?
Yeah, you would need to move.
Okay, I need a motion.
I move to postpone the public hearing for PZC twenty-five dash one to the April seventh, twenty twenty-five regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission with the applicant's consent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. And motion carries, thank you. Okay, Planning and Zoning Commission, we're cutting into Greg's time. Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash two. Application for zoning text amendment, section seventeen point two point twenty-nine of the regulations to enable submission of an independent appraisal from professional appraisers to establish the market value of structures in FEMA special flood hazard area. As I said, this came from the commission, this was a, this came through our regulations committee. What we're specifically trying to deal with here is the value of the structure in the, these areas, not the value of the full property. Okay, so, and it has to do with what the value, or how much they can improve a structure without having to raise it. For example, if it's below the new FEMA flood match. Okay, so. Did I miss anything important with that?
No, the, the, the big thing here is that the, there's two different ways that, there's different ways that FEMA allows the value, the market value of that structure, to have structures to be defined. And since two thousand and seven, Clinton has had the provision that you can only use the assessor's appraised value, so the higher of the two values the assessor uses, but the assessor's appraised value was that benchmark. And we've heard from folks, especially under, you know, sort of market conditions changing and other pieces, that those values may not reflect what they believe the true market value of their properties to be, when they come in for applications for a building permit, for example, to remodel a kitchen or replace a roof. So one of the things that the commission was asked to do, and the commission took up, was modifying that definition to still include the appraiser. So nobody's required to go out and do something different from what the town assessor does. But if somebody feels very strongly that they have another basis for determination, a professional appraiser can also provide an alternative value for folks to use. So it's giving people two sort of paths. We did go ahead and put this into, so we did two things with this, we sent it out to Rivercog for review, so it was a municipal referral. And we also sent it up to deep for their review and had some feedback from the state flood plan coordinator on it. The, the only thing that folks are, were sort of being aware of, one, Rivercog, you know, did not see any adverse impacts to neighboring communities from this, so there was no sort of concern raised through their sort of lens that they look at it. The state flood plane coordinator, she did sort of just note that there would, there may be times when somebody, you know, sort of provides a higher appraisal in order to perhaps not have to meet that fifty percent at the same level that the current requirement would be, so it will raise for folks. The flip side, which the commission has discussed in, in meetings throughout crafting this, was that it also gives people a little bit of breathing room if they need to make repairs to homes that may not be valued as, as highly as they hoped. You know, if they've got a roof repair and they need to replace their windows and a whole bunch of things add up, within that five-year lookback period, they could, they could hit a wall where the next necessary improvement is the trigger that puts them over fifty percent. And so part of it is trying to also help folks to encourage property maintenance and sort of concerning of those, of the buildings and sort of the tactics there. So there's, there's certainly, you know, looking through this, and, and my staff report kind of outlined some of the consistency with the P O C D and just sort of been aware that over time, we should watch whether or not and how these substantial improvement applications are coming through, and if there's any.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind that, you know, and it says it in there, is the structure, not the property, so is, you know, you're not, you know, in many of these cases, the property is worth a lot more than the structure. So you're taking that out of it, it's what FEMA cares about is the value of the structure. Okay, so, you know, it's percentage variation is really not going to be significantly different in most cases.
In, in many, and again, it's, it's certainly, you know, if it goes, I mean, we said this in our, in our meetings, if it goes on the other side, if somebody is saying, listen, I, I disagree with the assessor's appraisal, and there's something in our town records that said, wait a minute, you said it was up here, and you're, you're sort of disagreeing. That's in our records too, but, but typically, the assessments are, they're made with a different set of calculations formulas and, and methodology than, than this. This is really specifically for the determination of, of the value, with the very narrow criteria of do you or do you not meet that fifty percent threshold, where you have to bring the structure into full compliance with the current FEMA standards. So the only language that we're changing would be in the definition of market value.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Before I open it up to the public, is there any questions or for Abby or comments from the commission?
I just have one, I have a few questions, I guess. What would be, if we change this, are we, if there were to be some clause for FEMA to we need FEMA assistance, would this impact our ability to receive assistance?
No, this is consistent with the way that FEMA permits municipalities to interpret market value.
If the town does not, if the town changes this, does that open us up to not? So if it's consistent with FEMA, I guess that, that's already, we're doing it the way we're supposed to, yes?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I guess that kind of answers a couple of the questions, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody?
Yeah, just a quick question. So I'm just kind of noting what Rivercog and Deep had said. That it could potentially lead to more work being permitted in special flood hazard areas. Is this gonna, could this potentially have unintended consequences on, on our shores, where we're already seeing, you know, massive flooding and rising of water levels? Could this potentially have, if we're overbuilding, if we get a property and we're looking at just the property value, and then it's appraised for a lot more than what the assessor, because they're using a different formula? And then down the road, we're gonna have issues because of our rising water levels? Would there be, I mean?
Things, you idiot.
Go ahead.
So, so I think the important thing, it's kind of in the mid one of the line in the staff report, the commit, the commission's charge is, is to balance the need to maintain property over time and provide folks with the flexibility to do that with long-term resilience.
Okay.
And those are, those are the two things that the commission needs to balance.
But there is a balance.
Right, and that's what I'm very concerned about.
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead.
To kind of jump on what Cinzia said, the P O C E actually specifically calls out limit significant installation of infrastructure within floodways. And I understand it's a balance, so maybe home improvements aren't necessarily, not significant infrastructure, but.
Yeah, infrastructure would, in my opinion, would be town structures or, or utility structures, or, you know, something like that would be infrastructure, not, not the property owner.
Well, I mean, this kind of dovetails into if we're allowing overbuilding, conceptually, just call it excess, more building. Would we put more potentially, what, what is that, water runoff there to go for trying to prevent the flooding of these areas now? Is that infrastructure?
Yeah. Well, I don't. I recognize you.
There's not really concern that, because you're not changing the footprint of the building. It's, it's all about what you're able to do with inside the existing footprint. Unless you're trying to expand it, in which case the cost of that is going to be substantially higher than likely within, within the point of having to lift the property within flood compliance. So I think the, as Mike, the chair said prior, was structure, not property, the percentage wise, I, I understand, I think that's an important thing to, I had a misunderstanding of earlier, so. Right, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Abby, I saw you.
Well, I, I think it's important to note, too, new construction has to be built to the current standards. There's, there's no, no question about that. So this does not on its face expand development. It doesn't open up lots that may be vacant now, or the tear down rebuilds, or those kinds of things. That's not what this covers. What this says is if somebody wants to remodel their kitchen, put on a new roof, and do their windows at the same time, they could submit, so they could essentially invest in the existing structure and then not have to necessarily go through the elevation process at that time. So essentially, you're saying your threshold, at which point you need to elevate or, or come into other compliance. We talked a lot about elevation because we're thinking, we're thinking the coastal area, but we may also be talking about things like, you know, raising your HVAC units above a certain threshold, or, you know, that kind of thing. So there may be other flood compliance pieces, just to make it clear. But, but we're not saying build new, we're not saying put on massive addition, we're saying the existing structure as it sits can be improved upon to a higher degree.
Is your, um, um, my theory? Valuenter, like. Fifty percent? Fifty?
When you hit fifty percent improvement, whether because you're not voluntarily doing these improvements, or because you've sustained damage to your structure, the value, the fifty percent of the value of that structure before the damage occurs, that fifty percent is the threshold at which you have to bring the structure to compliance. And, and so that's, that's important to, to note, and the each of these appraisal would be submitted independently by a professional appraiser and be, it, it, there, there's not sort of a blanket cost or escalator, or, or, they're, they're each giving an independent appraisal of that one structure for that one permit.
Who's hiring the appraiser?
Yeah, because we need to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is why we left in the assessor's data, because not everybody can afford to go and hire an appraiser, or may not want to, may not need to. So, that's, yeah, and the other thing, you know, to, to note here, which is not on the table for this application, but the lookback period is the other part of this that factors in to how long we're going back in time to say any improvements that have been made from right now, we have a five-year lookback. So anything that was made five years before the application comes in counts. So if somebody's done a series of, of home repairs, and now their water heater goes, those, I think that was sort of the intent of this, was to say, let's provide some relief for those folks if the, if the dollars don't get on there.
Okay.
I just have, sorry, another question. Would the potential to have this mess up market value in Clinton, would it have the potential, if I'm having an independent appraiser come and appraise a house that I want to fix up on, how they'll wrote, and he values that at five hundred thousand dollars? And, but the town assessor, because they're using a different formula, would have valued that at three hundred thousand?
Keep in mind, well, it's two things. Keep in mind.
This is just the.
It's just the structure, not the, not the whole thing. Okay, so, not the whole property, and the other applies to areas in the FEMA.
In the FEMA zone, okay, so say the house is in the FEMA zone. Would this then put the housing market in Clinton at, be extremely disproportionate depending on who you have assess your home in that same, in your, that very same neighborhood?
So, no. It, obviously it could, because you're gonna have more improvements in the home versus a neighborhood that's lived there for sixty years and hasn't done anything to it. It's all individual market value, which is something that you, you cannot qualify for, in all the sense on how somebody values a home for themselves. Like, you do the only thing you mess up with the neighboring properties in the market itself, because, you know, you have states subdivision, you have two identical houses next to each other, but suddenly you get some improvements to it, that one's obviously going to sell more than what it's original.
I think you're actually making a pretty different argument there. Yours, yours is if they do the improvements, it improves the value, actually, okay. Understand, well, what you're more concerned about is two different tables changing the value dramatically.
Yes.
But keep in mind, when you go to sell a house, it's going to be the, you know, the appraiser that the realtor brings in that sets the cost, the, the value of the house, so that's not depending on this, in, that, this will not impact that.
Okay, I just don't want people in, in, being put out of homes.
You're right. Well, what I'd like to do now, to open this up, if there's anyone from the public who would like to comment on this at a public hearing, we want to hear from the public if you've had comments. We ask that you identify yourself for the record and state first whether you're for the proposal, opposed to the proposal, or just giving general comment. Keep in mind, during the public hearing, we can't give you opinions, our opinions about this, all we can do is take information. So we ask that you give us information that we can use when we're making our decision. All that said, and it will apply to the next two items also. Does anybody have anything to say to concerning this application? Go ahead.
My name is Tom Camelli. I'm at Eight Shore Grove Road. I would like to speak in favor of this. It feels like an incremental in change, not a wholesale change. It feels like it could be good for a lot of neighborhoods. Where homes might have been, have a lot of deferred maintenance, just hasn't been able to afford because of the fifty percent rule, not quite allowing it much. And my other thought on some of that is, it might also allow for folks who hit that wall. Maybe if they have an appraisal, maybe they'll be able to paint the outside of their building or do some siding. Or maybe an energy efficient system for heating. It just feels like it, it's a good change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to comment? Okay. Is there anybody online that wanted to comment? No. Okay. With that, are there any final comments from commission members or questions? No, they already have my answers. In that case, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Standing, motion carries, thank you. That was closed. Now we move on. Greg, you got bumped down the seat, so you got a moment.
Yeah, you lowered you down, Greg. Downgraded.
Oh, wait, we're on the seat.
Yeah, we are.
You're back up, Greg.
So we're on to Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-four dash twenty-one, special exception permit a liquor store pursuant to section twenty-seven point two point six of the planning and zoning regulations. And then associated site plan permit retail restaurant and ten residential units pursuant to Connecticut general statute of state thirty G at three twenty-seven East Main Street. The applicant is fetish engineering. And of course, I can see we have an agent here. Who would like to start?
I'll start. I'm attorney Ed Casella. Representing the applicant, which is C C A B L L C for this development proposed at three twenty-seven East Main Street. Property is currently under contract. And he is seeking to develop, redevelop property, you know, there's a number of existing buildings on the site. It's a hundred and twenty-six thousand square foot parcel wetlands on the east side. Greg submitted applications and received wetlands approval a few months ago, and now we're here for this application. We, there's been some challenges with the health department, so there's been some reconfiguration of the interior of the building in particular, so we have updated building elevations and floor plans. I brought, we brought a couple of large scale copies, we filed it online with the system, and then I brought some eleven by seventeens if folks want to look at, at paper, so here are some large ones. And then I can pack it, if people want it.
Just true to. Go through this. Thank you. All right.
We can, maybe Abby can put this up on the screen too. And.
Hi, I'm. Thanks.
I'll give a brief overview, then we'll have Greg come up and talk a little bit more specific. We know this is not, the public hearing is going to stay open until next month. So this is what we think is an opportunity just to present to you, see if you have any questions, understanding there's still work that needs to be done at, in particular, the health department. So, application for twelve residential units under eight thirty G plus twelve thousand square feet of retail. One main retail is proposed to be liquor store for grand wine and spirits, and then two retail stores on the first floor, the second floor. Here, this is, this is the building design. The first floor will have the main liquor store in the middle, and then two retail, uh, uh, office type spaces on either side. We were originally hoping for restaurant, but Greg, you can talk a little bit more about that. On the second floor will be a combination of storage for the retail, in particular, the liquor store, and two of the apartments. And.
Sorry about that.
Wrong. Lost it.
There was no, we're, we're trying to make sure that we're sharing this ingredient for the folks at home.
Yeah. There we go. It's. Second page.
Can you all hear us okay?
Yeah.
Okay, because Jeff Becker had put a note, the sound is gone, I just wanted.
Oh, nice, I can hear.
Okay.
I just have to.
Oh, it's on, they're on different PDFs, sorry.
Yeah.
First floor.
You want first floor?
Sure. First floor, like I said, in the middle, seven thousand square feet for retail liquor. And then two complimentary retail spaces on the side, fifteen hundred square feet, nineteen hundred square feet. The main entrance for liquor will be in the front of the store. Then there'll be secondary entrance in the rear with the loading space back into the receiving dry storage, if you can scroll down a little bit, the other way. And then in the back, there's additional, you know, office break room associated with the liquor store, and then the main entry into the units upstairs. And that includes a vestibule with an elevator and stairs to get up to the units upstairs. So I guess now we can go to the second floor.
In the page two?
Yeah. Okay, so second floor has two apartments. See, the elevator comes out to all two apartments. A tasting room as part of the retail, and then a, a store, large storage area with a, with a, a, a separate lift for the alcohol to go up and down. That was one of the big problems with the layout from the initial. For the alcohol to go up and down. That was one of the big problems with the layout from the uh, initial design was. The only way to go up and down mechanized was the common elevator. So liquor control would have a problem with that, so that necessitated part of this redesign. And then scroll down. Um, there's a two P P D spaces. Um. We had to eliminate some units and or and or bedrooms because of the health department so far. And so th- there's, these aren't defined, but we're thinking community space for the the members, potentially storage. Um, something that we can do within the um. Uh, you know, the the gallons per day that the site can accommodate. Okay, next one. And then on the third level, there's um. Uh, ten total uh, residential units, two. Um, two bedroom units, eight. One bedrooms and two, I guess they're called uh, efficiencies. Like this isn't, I'm not sure why this is a one, an efficiency versus a one bedroom. But you can see there versus some of the units have like an office, a one bedroom living area. Uh, they range between the two larger ones downstairs, thirteen hundred square feet, sixteen hundred square feet. And then the rest are between seven hundred and um, nine seventy-five is the table with all the uh. Uh, with all the data on it.
And those are all eight thirty G?
These are all eight thirty G, yeah, the apartments are all eight thirty G, so there's twelve units. And um, under eight thirty G, thirty percent of them need to be affordable. So that's four total affordable units, two rented um. To individuals making sixty percent of the median income and two affordable to individuals making eight percent of the median income. Uh, so I I've worked. This is a little bit of work in progress, so apologies, but we have to update the affordability plan to include updated. Unit numbers and uh, zoning regulations, uh, but just, you know, we have this, so we wanted to come share it with the commission. Uh. With what we have today. So that's, I think, everything I was planning on saying, and I'll let Greg, if he has anything further. Um, you know, can 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 run through the site plan if he wants.
Uh, do you want me to do it up there?
Did you have another, did you upload a new site plan?
No.
Okay.
You wanna do that?
Did you have to uh, get rid of several apartments?
No, it was. Well, Greg can, Greg, let Greg talk more about that. I wasn't.
Who you mentioned that?
I did mention losing some space, but there originally it was trying to all be on one floor and that didn't work, so that's why there's that excess.
If you could come up closer so we can see and hear it better.
Okay, you want, you want this though?
Yeah, they wanna see it.
Yeah.
I wanna go past the point of no return here, is this okay here? You don't need to.
Yeah, right there's good, that's good, Greg.
Good evening, Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering, so opposite seventy S Sixth Street Mystic, Connecticut, apologize for. Being late, little traffic on ninety-five and a little tie up for other reasons, but anyway, uh, happy to be here tonight, it's our. First presentation before the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this project. Um, kind of as Ed stated, we it's. Uh, it's not the most straightforward site, it's got a few things going against it, floodplain, wetlands, um. You know, uh. Route one kind of existing, uh, anyway, we uh, we feel like we get, we. Got a building, got a layout, got a wetlands approval, um. That that we can kinda live with. Um, and you know. Blood, blood plane kind of brings us up in elevation. Um, which we were able to make it all work, stormwater, everything uh, works pretty well, we did some. Enhanced wetland improvements, if you look at it now, it's kind of a. Kind of a creeping. Wetland fill job over the years where the lawn kind of just kept expanding towards the wetlands. Um, and we've noticed, you know, a good portion, a a portion of the lawn, I wouldn't say a good portion, is actually wetlands. Uh, so we're kind of bringing rejuvenating or rest restoring that as part of this application. Um, and we did get approval from the Wetlands Commission uh, for that. Uh. So uh, is on the north side of uh, Route one, uh, next to. Car wash and kind of used dealership over here, uh, carefree or the. Uh, shed place uh, to the west. Um. So what we're proposing to do is is demolish the existing antique store that's there, uh, remove all the sheds. Uh, and basically uh, kind of start with a clean, clean slate. Uh, there'll be a uh, retaining wall kind of defining that kind of wetland separation. Um, and allowing us to bring the site up uh, in order to get the first floor at at an elevation that works for FEMA. Um. So a majority of the parking in the front for uh, for the retail uses. Uh, and then an additional parking area in the rear for uh, the apartments and. I'm gonna go through the site plan and then I'll talk about the uh, the residential uh, use. Um, but two uh, two existing or two curb cups, ba- basically it's in the existing is kind of wide open. Uh, not a very defined uh. Perp cut area, but basically you can kind of go in almost anywhere uh, to the site. Uh, we're gonna define two areas, you you'll kind of go up at a reasonable slope to kind of bring it up to grade. Uh, parking and so forth will be um, kind of just below uh, floodplain. Uh, the, the building itself will be at base flood, at least base flood plus one, I just wanna confirm the number. Yeah, we're at thirteen point two five, I think we're in eighty twelve. Uh, yeah, so it's base flood plus one, um, with a little bit of extra, uh, just in case. Um. So we originally had, uh. We had three floors uh, on the building. To get the residential use, we originally had it on the second floor, all of it on the second floor. And then we were gonna do uh, the liquor store requires a decent amount of storage. We had that on the third floor, thinking that. That way we can kind of get that within the roof lines and so forth, uh, but then as it stated. We're utilizing a lift or an elevator. Both for commercial use and for residential use and we'd also have. After hours moving of liquor up and down, restocking and so forth, and we said, ah, it's. Probably not a great idea, uh, so we looked at. Um. Sorry, let's do a basement. You know, then maybe that makes sense, and then. There's a whole slew of other issues with trying to get a basement in. Um, and the floodplain, I think we could do it, it's commercial, you could floodproof it. Um. But there's some other construction issues with that. Uh, so anyway, we ended up with uh. And letting go our original architect and and uh, working with it with a different architect, uh, incorporating. Um. Similar height building. Um. But instead, uh, majority of the uh, residential is on the third floor. A little bit on the second floor and the storage and so forth, as Ed spoke about. Uh, some some undefined areas which. We will in the next two weeks prior to the next meeting will define everything and clarify on those drawings. So there's no questions at all. Um. Regarding what we're doing on the site, uh, we originally did, as it stated, uh, we had a. Um, I wanna call it a US big service restaurant. Um, designed for one of the sides here with the drive-through. I think we're relooking at that also, cause that was a forty seat, like something like a. Starbucks is like thirty something seats, so we were kind of looking at that originally. And I think we're moving away from that and do more of a takeout, uh, something which will reduce uh. Uh, our volume for um. Septic and so forth, as well as some other things, so uh. That'll be, all be clarified before the next meeting, I don't wanna, we're not. This this thing is all kind of moving, we're trying to balance. And this isn't the commission's issue, but we're trying to, that reality is, we're trying to balance. The cost of it and making it all work with loans and so forth and. The residential and the eight dash thirty G and thirty percent of the units uh, affordable and so forth. So we're just trying to make it all work and there's a lot of moving pieces, so I do apologize for. A little bit of the piecemeal coming in, changing gears with the architect and so forth. Uh, so that's kind of the overview of the site, I can, I'm gonna flip through uh, quickly. If there's any questions, uh. Uh, we can save you for the end or you can ask him, I can go. Um. Uh, sheet two is just the existing. Yes.
Yeah, I just have, I know you kind of touched on it, so. So Crad is saying that. The proposed wastewater system has not been progressed, so. Um, do you plan on putting in a wastewater system, is that what you're trying to do, or are you trying to replace the septic?
Oh, no, we're we're we're, I'll get to that sheet here shortly and I will expand upon her, I did talk to her, meet with her the other day. Um. Rebecca, um, so I will, I will comment that when we get to that sheet. Uh, but yes, we are proposing a new septic system, absolutely need one. So this is the existing conditions, uh. Existing building and then all the sheds that are here, uh. Majority is a grassed area and then the wetlands, uh, there is an easement. Uh, for drainage that runs through there. Some of the old language talked about piping it and. Uh, maintaining a nice channel and so forth, none of that was accomplished over the years. Therefore, we had kind of a wetland that. The the channels there per se, but it's not well maintained. Uh, there's, I would say there's trash and so forth throughout, and clean all that up, um. Yeah, I think, I don't know, historically, the water came down through here. Uh, but there was definitely in the sixties, I wanna say, that there there, they took this subdivision up here. And they specifically piped it uh, down to this point. And then there was talk in the easements about a piping it, which. You know, would it would it helped us at this point, but that never got done, maintaining a nice channel through there, that never really got done, so. We're kind of stuck with what we, what we ended up with, uh. And I think through the Wetland Commission, we were able to enhance what's there, I think we're gonna. I would say. Uh, the function will be better, the value will be better, the. Uh. It'll look nicer, uh, all those things, so. Um. Three, I'll just go quickly, the demolition plan, basically, it's basically removing everything on site. Um. Kind of, I'm gonna clean slate. Uh, site plan kind of spoke about most of it, some of the. If you look closely here, some of the, there's kind of some. Uh, detention basin creation as well as wetland restoration. As well in, as well as wetland creation, uh, there's a separate sheet for all of that, that kind of defines it all. Uh, but all this water comes down, all this is gonna go into here. It slow down a little bit and then enter the channel uh, down in 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 this location and then cross Route one. Um. Again, so we do have some wall, a wall along this side, we have a wall along this side and a couple of short walls here just to get. To make it all work, you're kind of going up with. With two entrances. And then kind of plateauing to where the building is, and then the parking kind of falls back a little bit, but it's still up at a higher elevation. So you almost have like two ramps going up um, on either side, and that's the reason for the walls. Uh, kind of the better soils are back behind the building about from the back of the building. Uh. To the northern property line, and that's where we can see all the testing that was done, uh, but that's where we're proposing our septic system. Uh, so on this plan also, we showed snow storage areas. Um, all the parking requirements, uh, zoning table. Um. I wanna say the only thing we.
You showed trash?
Uh, that's one thing we need to add is a trash enclosure, um. And we're gonna be adding a fence along uh, this property line, cause of the. Uh, the neighbor's building is is relatively close to our property line, so we'll be adding a fence. We won't be putting the trash back in that area, so we're gonna work that into the back of the building somewhere. Um, it's one thing we did miss, and thank you for the reminder. Um. I think Ed can speak to this if necessary, I think the only. Thing we don't need in the zoning regulations, maybe the height, we're slightly over on the height requirement. Um. But I think with the eight dash thirty G, we're we're allowed a little bit of flexibility on that, I think we've. Met all the other other requirements of the zoning rights. Uh, some detailing on the um, grading and drainage, uh, it's pretty extensive system. Um, some underground storage, front and back for the building, uh, roof leaders. That all gets uh, piped in over to. Uh, the created wetland and the wetland restoration area, which are kind of two larger. Uh, very shallow, they're not, they're not deep at all, they're very shallow basins. Um, but they're they're. Large and spread out, so you 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 won't see a big deep basin. You'll see a very shallow basin, um, we're talking again. Uh, around a foot, foot plus. Uh. Uh, some cross sections on uh. One, the the walls on either side, uh, max height, I think, um, the wetland side is eight feet for the wall there, you can see the basin. Uh, and the depth, you'd see it's just not that deep, it's matching existing grade over here at a little about three and change. And the bottom is at three, I believe, so um, and then on this side, it's a little bit deeper. Uh. And then the wall on the other side is is only a couple of feet tall, uh, varies throughout, we picked two cross sections. Uh. And then the, again, the septic system cross sections are here. Uh, child, we have a separate sheet for that. Kind of a, this was more for the wetlands, but we kept it in the. Um. Kept it in the set just to kind of show you, um. The the three. They each it is. Um. Yeah, so this is the. Uh, the resultant wetland area, which is an increase, um. By X square feet, I can give you that number shortly, this is the. Uh, grading plan of the of the area, so there's different hatchings on here. Uh, this area down here is all new wetland, new wetland and then. The shaded area here is the wetland restoration and this. Small hatched area here is wetland, we're uh, filling. Uh, so but the resultant is like a five times uh, creation overfilling, so. The sheet dedicated to the mitigation from soil scientists. I won't go into those details, they were, uh. Yeah. The consultant, uh, wetland consultant as. The consultant, uh wetland consultant as well as for the town went through it pretty well. This is the septic plan, so we are proposing a new septic system. Um up in the upper left corner where the good soils are uh. So again, we're. Uh part of the confusion, not confusion, I would say, but the. With the residential is what's driving size of that, uh as well as we had a forty seat restaurant, so we're gonna dial. Again, we're gonna work through that with the. Systems big enough to handle a certain amount. Um and.
Do you have a reserve area?
Uh we're not required to have reserve areas because it's an existing uh property. Though it's not required um.
Other question?
Go ahead.
Greg, uh.
Yes.
When I was looking at the uh JS map of the property and and the original drawings and stuff. The original parcel has that little jump to the side. I see on on the proposed map, that's gonna be left out um.
Yes, so we are um as part of the deal with the owner, uh they wanted to keep this this.
The landlocked?
Not, well, they own.
The house on the corner too?
They own this parcel here, so I think they're adding into that and um. That was just part of the deal.
Would there be any way to potentially, I mean, you know?
So we did explore that area for septic.
Okay.
And it was not adequate. We actually. I want to say we hit an old concrete slab for a good majority of. The area we tested there, so I don't know what was there before. Yeah, okay, well.
The whole property line. But it used to be a pool right behind the house. And then there were all um hotel cottages surrounding the perimeter.
Thank you.
So I guess that's why we hit concrete there. We did test it because we thought that'd be a good spot for septic. Um kind of prior to it, kind of coming off the table anyway, so it it. It doesn't really help us, I guess, in a sense for the development um. So yes, we will work through the septic issues where now that we. We got the final, 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 not the final drawings, but the architectural drawings that are pretty close now. We're gonna nail down uh the number of units as well as the bedrooms. We're gonna relook at the forty seat restaurant and. Dial back as much as we need to in order to make the subject work. So we do have an initial review from them and, you know, there's no. I guess from my standpoint, there's no big picture concerns. We just gotta make the numbers. Uh work, work the size.
Okay, um so I was noticing the height. And so is there a leeway because something is a eight eight thirty G?
So the provisions of eight thirty G, which is for folks in the audience, the affordability statute. The the provisions of eight thirty G shift the burden of of proof back onto the commission to say that the need for. Basically, you have to prove that the need for affordable housing would be outweighed by whatever condition that may disagree with. So if there's, you'd have to show there are health, safety, welfare concern in that three feet of height difference from the zoning requirement to what you're proposing.
Okay.
And is it sufficient enough to overcome the town's need for affordable housing? And the commission would be obligated to put that proof into the record as as the basis of your decision.
And then one other thing. And I'm sorry, but I'm not afraid of reading these. Is there anything, I haven't seen it. Is there any of these plans that infringe on um P and Z uh? Like wetlands or easement regulations? Is any of this plan in violation of a certain footage?
So moving to soil erosion sediment control plan uh. Basically, um silk fence down gradient of all disturbed areas, uh we um. I wouldn't say we were put through the wringer. We were, we were during the wetlands process, we. Uh added uh additional erosion control wattles and and additional layers of silk fence and so forth. To basically. Uh protect the existing wetlands while we're doing the restoration. And then protecting all of it separately, so I think the sediment erosion control was. Was wherever we missed, the town engineer caught and the wetlands uh consult caught and we added. Appropriately um. The the right amount of of erosion controls to to basically protect. The existing wetland as well as the restored wetland as well as the created wetlands. Um and we also have two um anti-tracking pads as we come in, a stockpile area um. But basically uh uh well thought out and. Uh vetted through the town engineer already, so um. Any questions? Yeah, I'm happy to answer.
I I just have one follow up to the height uh question. If you look at the new plan, the heights actually increased a little bit. Um it's up to forty six feet. Uh and you can see all of the height request is basically in peeking the roof. You want, if you want to go, it, the top of the, the top of the third floor would be like a thirty three foot height. And so it's a fourteen foot high, you know, maybe a little bit of. Room up up there for headspace on the third floor. It's hard for me to tell, but going over forty is to add peak to a roof. Above the third story, so as Abby said, from from our perspective under eight thirty G, that's allowed. We're gonna. Try to work with the architect to see if we can't lower it because we know that's something the commission's asked for. Um but it's all based upon basically an additional level of apartments, right? That's the third story is all the apartments, so that's why. It's it's it exceeds that number of uh of forty feet.
Little peak rather than a flat roof.
Uh yeah.
And it's, is it merely cosmetic, right? Is it merely for appeal, visual appeal?
Uh again, I don't have a roof. I can't see what's in there, you know, and with with the plans that we have. No, it's a, it looks like it's a peaked roof.
Okay.
So there's, there's a slight peak we have with.
We'll say, I didn't recalculate per the regulations.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Fight, so it may may seem like it's forty six.
Next month when you come back, you'll have the.
Oh, yeah, we'll have that.
When you come back, will you guys have a lighting plan too for for maybe?
Uh yeah. Yeah, I think we have, uh I thought we have lighting on there, but let me. Think the landscape and lighting plan is coming up.
Okay.
But I, but I.
I jumped in too.
I haven't looked at it uh a little bit, so let me uh. Uh yes, you did. Some of the details, drainage details, uh handicap, uh spots, uh ramping. Uh the wall details, uh similar wall to what we did over at Indian River Shops.
Hmm.
The big uh big block uh walls, which seem to be. A balance between looks and cost and ease feasibility of construction, so um. We do have a light post detail here, so I'm guessing we. You have a lighting plan, we're gonna have to do it in a little bit, but we'll see. Uh some septic details um. Basically, the GST geometric sixty two twelve, which is a shallow. System as spread out as as possible, just to. It just seems to work better than having deeper systems that are or storage uh. Old concrete gallery, that kind of thing. Uh it's, it's kind of the system. Probably not my number one system that I like to spec anywhere for a single family home or something like this. Uh there will be. Uh soil air, uh which introduces oxygen to the system, which basically. Kind of creates an indefinite life to a septic system as long as the tanks are pumped, so um. That's septic details. That's it, I. I must have skipped over or we missed, didn't print out separate plan, I'm just saying. Or the uh. No, you did, it's like I'm missing.
I I was watching on the screen.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm missing, I'm missing that, so we'll get that for next time. I apologize.
I mean, uh on the architectural drawings, you uploaded the file and it's down. Uh no, you gave us this once tonight, the show height of forty six feet.
To the peak.
Yeah, in the application, it says uh thirty three. Now the architectural drawings, it shows forty four. What is that? What's the height going to be?
Where do you, where do you see the forty eight four?
On the uh drawings in the file under uh. Artificial plan, A one through A five.
Oh, so that those are the uh. Superseded by the ones we just submitted, which are the ones that are on this sheet and right there. This says forty six.
To the peak, to the peak.
And that's. Yeah, that's not calculated per your regulation.
The regulation and average.
It's, yeah, yeah, so we're. Probably closer to that original forty three is my guess, but I'm gonna. Make sure we have a height calculation, so. Oh, let's see, building height, main elevation between ridge and eaves. Average finished grade, ten feet around. We're gonna do the same detail we did here. Just update it with the with the right height, so my. My guess is it's probably forty three ish. Um even though it says four forty six on there, it's not calculated per. Yeah, so. So if you look here, it's, you know, somewhere.
Right.
Down here um. And then I gotta fix. He's got it for finished grade, so I'll clarify all that. We'll get the right number. We understand the commission's concern with the height and we'll try to. Minimize that as much as we possibly can and still get it all to work.
Any other, is that the end of your presentation?
Yeah, uh. I'm not gonna spend any more time on the floor plans. We're gonna get that all straightened out in the next. Two weeks and back to uh the commission. All, everything's gonna get coordinated. Uh there's twelve units now. Should be ten, so we're just gonna work through all that.
Thank you.
Make sure it's right.
Um so how much, so the current um parking area is all vegetation, it's all lawn, right, at this point?
Yes.
How much are you, is the paving over for parking gonna take up of that, like? Swift or amount?
What's our?
The part, the paved area now, I guess. I what I'm saying is, is that new or uh? He restored, all all the water is gonna be directed towards a restored wetland. But that's gonna be a lot more water running into that at this point because of the paving of the road. Is that gonna withhold and wash over?
Yeah, so our our net net from two year to a hundred year is less. Uh runoff uh to the analysis point, which is the point that it leaves the site and goes under the road.
Uh I think what might be uh being asked is, what's your percentage of ground coverage?
So you're testing my memory. I I don't remember the number. But it's, it was taken into account in our drainage calculations um.
Is it on your zoning table?
I, I don't think it is, I don't think. Do you have a, oh, you do, don't, never do. Yeah. The ground coverage. Your ground coverage definition includes pavement, so you're hundred percent correct. The allowable is eighty percent. The existing is three point one and we're at thirty nine point six.
You're going up. Then hold over central on that.
We're also fifty percent below your requirement.
Yep.
Or your allowable, so, but all that's taken into account in our drainage calculations. Reviewed by the town engineer and the numbers spitting out the other.
Going in on the northeast side due to the um like.
Uh, what was the question?
You're not doing anything related to the northeast side of the property.
Yes, this whole area here, we're not, uh we're not touching. I want to say from this point over. This whole corner. Yeah, our silk fence runs basically. Right down, just just this side of the channel. And then another row of silk fence runs down on the created area.
Any other questions before I open it up to the public? No, sir. Okay, um at this time, I would like to open this uh public hearing. To the members of the public who've sat here so patiently. Um do you have, if you have anything you want to say, please identify yourself for the record. And again, you know, provide us with uh information so that we can consider it when we're considering an application. Anybody have anything they want to say?
Yes, I'll go. I'm Michelle Mary. Um I'm neither for or against the project. I just have some comments. Um and this is my building right here, so.
Speak up, speak up.
This is, this is where my office is right here that I own, so I'm be looking right at this project. I and I have no problem with, you know, this gentleman's gonna be spending a lot of money, you know. It's still eleven thousand thirty? That hasn't changed?
Yeah, about that.
So, you know, four hundred dollars a square foot is about four million, it's a lot of money, so roughly. Like what I'm thinking, but um anyhow, the. My concern, and Greg mentioned it, um you know. The property line is right here. Uh I would like to keep some of the tall trees that are lining. That are left, but he was gonna put a um a eight foot fence?
I think whatever the allowable is, I think it's six.
Six, okay, six, you know, I would like it to be solid um. Or PVC or picket or something, not chain rule, but going down because they're gonna be raising the grade. Okay, and. Uh originally, they were gonna put a restaurant in, but that's not for today, so. Um I was very concerned about, you know, there might be fifty, ten or people there, et cetera. Uh now it's just affordable housing. Are you doing liquor permit tonight, though?
There's no separate liquor permit here, it's just.
Or special, special exception for.
For the liquor store.
Is that for tonight?
That that's part of his.
Okay, so my other concern is the. That that permit or that approval be going with this gentleman because um. Not just with the building, not just with the project, so that. You know, let's say the project doesn't go through for this gentleman, the and um or. Let's say he doesn't get a loan or something like that and it falls through, and then this property already has that approval. So I would, I would like that to be considered, because I I understand he already owns liquor stores, so. Uh.
Wait, but by now.
Right, so and this is, he's gonna be closing that one down to open this one up, which is fine, that. You know, I don't have a problem with that. I just, you know, to have an approval, it should be for this person. For the liquor um. Uh the other issue that I had, oh, is the dumpsters. Uh I want them on the opposite side of the property. Uh our dumpsters are way far down here um. And I just, you know, with liquors and bottles and all that stuff, there, we do have a lot of rodents in this area um. So I don't know why, but there is, maybe because of the title march. And the other thing with this wetlands here, this is titled, just so you know, because I lived. I lived across the street for thirteen years and. I lived across the street for thirteen years and, you know, every time there's a high tide or a full moon or something, this, this water comes up, so. Um, anyhow, so I, I would want it on the opposite side, not near me, because I don't wanna hear, you know. I don't want the garbage next to me, I don't, you know. I've enjoyed this office space, so our, our, our building is roughly ten thousand square feet too, um. But it's professional use only, it's, you know. Approved for only like lawyers, you know, whatever, therapists. My office is there, um, you know, it, accountants, whatever. So everything's quiet here. So. I would want, you know, something similar, like the liquor store obviously has the liquor hours and stuff like that, and. I, obviously, I was concerned if there was a restaurant going there, I would have all. A whole laundry list, so I have things to say, but, um. Not today, so. Anyhow, those were my concerns and I wish him luck.
Very, very eager to. Um.
Oh, and the other thing is, just, just for your reference, my building is two floors. So this will be three floors, so I'm not sure if it'll be exactly the same grade or what, so if you needed a visual reference, you could just drive by where my building is, so. Yeah. I don't know if that helps you.
Uh, would anybody else like to speak on? You will have an opportunity since this is going to be continued until, uh, next, uh, month. Uh, so that they can get the rest of the, uh, materials in. Um, right. And I would ask that, you know, next month, when you present, you only present new material?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yep, don't, don't rehash everything, thank you. Um. Anything else from the commission at this time? Okay, I'd like a motion to continue this. Hold on a second. Okay. No, that, that's enough.
Can you, can you clear out your screen so I could see?
All right, please.
It's, yeah, yeah, April seventh. Uh, I'm hungry. Continue to April seventh.
Correct, the, the letter, the, um, the grant of permission for the continuance was dated April fourteenth, which is our normal schedule, but, um, for holiday purposes, it was April seventh, so I just wanted to check. On the records, the date is April seventh.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. All in favor, all right. Um. Big, motion carries, thank you. Um. That report, uh, was really. Uh, we've gone through those, we've gone through this, so we've been, we've been, we've talked about those. New business. Um. Having losses, I would not forget the working condition that, oh, the camp.
Correct, that's under old business.
I think gold.
There's, yeah, no new application.
I remain gold business, uh. Let's see. The, uh, planning and zoning commission is twenty-seven dash twenty-one, we can't do anything with that tonight, because it'll get open. Uh, planning and zoning commission twenty-five dash one, amendment to the zoning regulations with the floating zone, that's been continued, so we don't have anything to do there. Uh, twenty-five dash two, public hearing has closed, this is our, uh. Uh, change to the tax amendment. Uh, allowing, uh, intending appraisal. So this is, this is ready for.
And we have. I was, I was good for a sound purpose, as opposed to both can have the conversation outside of the room.
Hey guys. Good, good, Ed, can you move people out, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye, so now for, um. Eighth C, this is open for discussion and a decision tonight. Um. I felt, uh, we had, uh, good questions about it, what, there was a discussion. Um, does anybody have any opinions they would like to say or, um. Concerns that they wanna make sure we're aware of? Yeah, okay. I will say that, you know, what you brought up about, um, balance, and something, you brought that up too, um. Something that I initially was, uh, really worried about. But when I consider it as a structural issue, I'm sorry, an issue related to the structure, not the full property. I don't see the, uh, magnitude of the difference being so great as to create an adverse situation for it. Um, that, I mean, that's my opinion, you all have to make your own decision, consider the balancing act, and I respect. You know, if you don't agree with me, I respect you, but I felt that I should. Tell you where I'm standing.
And Abby, can I ask a clarifying question, would this include, would these appraisals include? People who are developers purchasing these?
It has to be a real, a, a professional appraiser, so it has to be somebody whose professional certifications are of an appraiser.
Okay, but, and so if a developer is looking at a property, they can then hire this professional appraiser?
They couldn't.
They can.
And the appraiser is, is bound to, to use a certain methodology to provide that information, but yes, it could be. Hired by anyone who is in partnership on the project.
I'm just concerned with. A lot of homes around here going to developers. And then having those values even more inflated than what housing values are inflated, I mean, in, since two thousand seventeen, it's, inflation of housing. Is like sixty-two percent. Uh, has gone up sixty-two percent. Uh, and I just don't want that to become. Increasingly worse in this town where. We're making it so that houses are valued at so much more than what they actually are or should be. So. I don't know if that's.
That's worth that.
Reasonable.
It's something for you to consider, yeah.
Yeah.
It makes a lot of sense.
And I think the, the important thing is, in your record for decision-making.
Right.
What is the driver behind the market increase, is it the general market and, and sort of the times that we are in and the demand scarcity of, of residential properties that fit the need? And are, to what extent will these appraisals be responsible or could they be responsible for? Um, for driving those costs up, is this, is this the driver or is this the effect, and that's, that's a question for you guys to, to wrestle a little bit.
Okay, go ahead, Doc.
I, I guess I also would like to say, um, is this sending a signal, I know it might not have a substantial change, but is it sending a signal like contradicting, for example, the shore's plan? Um, or for closer resiliency plan, talking about. Perspective that the communities along the shoreline are taking in terms of. The rising tides and flooding and all those kind of things, and I mean, I'm, I'm more just saying that to the commission as opposed to. Ask, asking more of it's a rhetorical question, but I, I do think there is something to be said about the. The changing of our regulations and at the same time we're publishing a closer resiliency plan in terms of. Type of. Raising tide waters and we're seeing extreme precipitation events and stuff like that, so.
I, I have a question. I'm like, Chinzi, why are you so concerned about property values going up, right, wouldn't you be happy about that? Like if your house is worth more money than you paid for it, is, is that a bad thing?
No, but it's, it's not about that, it's about around the neighborhoods around that, the housing around that and. Properties that are not necessarily in reach for just the everyday Clinton family. Um, what's concerning me.
So you're concerned about the value being increased and people cannot be able to afford a house on the water, I mean, not everybody can afford a house on the water, not everybody can afford a house. Where they, you know, in certain areas, I mean, it's just part of.
Right.
Decide.
But. But also the drastic rise in housing over the past few years. Has more than tripled.
I know, so it's.
So it's, it's not about. Um, not maintaining your, you know, your current owner's property value, it's now. Completely not allowing, um, like our plan of conservation and development where we want growth and we wanna see where we need to see younger families coming in. Um, and how.
I know, but maybe, maybe Clinton isn't a place for them to live if they can't afford it, I mean, I don't understa- I'm confused about where you're at, you know what I mean? It's like if my, I bought a house, if I bought a house for five hundred thousand and now it's worth seven hundred thousand, I'm happy about that. I don't know if that's a bad thing. Right?
I think if you look at the demographics of our town, like we did in our, um, subcommittee meeting where. We have, I don't even have the percentage, but the majority of folks are. What, sixty-five, the average age is sixty, fifty-five and up? And that we're not able to attract younger families or that we need to start attracting younger families, yeah, we do need to look at what market value is and what cost of housing is for folks. Uh, or else we're gonna wind up in a really bad predicament, um, when we don't have anybody here and we don't have kids in our schools.
The biggest thing about the data that we saw, that's what I think.
Go ahead.
We seem to be saw about the data is that we don't have the inventory in town that, that those families want, you know, that there's. A lot of value to the place in the fifty or sixties and seventies, it was range ranges of split levels, a lot of people, younger children are looking for like four bedroomed apartments, we just don't have that. Um, that they're either, the ones we do are turned up by. People with children who doubt, so. It's out of the bottom, like we're.
Right.
Yeah.
But the properties that we can, that young families can get, they should be, have a chance at that.
Well, that, I think it's like fair market policy, it's like, you're, you're looking at everybody.
I'm not violating everything.
Okay, any other? Would somebody like to make a motion on this application? So. You wanna use a big type of a.
Oh, all right.
And then, and then we can discuss.
When you like closed it, all right, all right.
We should, uh, that one.
Okay, I'm. I moved to proof the proposed changes to section seventeen dot two dot twenty-nine of the Clinton zoning regulations as drafted in the application PZC twenty-five dash two. With an effective date of April seventh, twenty twenty-five, adopt the following findings of fact. The public hearing for the proposed tax amendments to section seventeen dot two dot twenty-nine of the Clinton zoning regulations. Met the notice requirements in section four dot three nine of the Clinton zoning regulations and Connecticut general statute eight dash seven D. The proposed amendments are consistent with section. One. Is that my, one, one dot four purpose of the Clinton zoning regulations. The proposed amendments are generally consistent with division of, for preservation of neighborhood character included in the twenty fifteen plan of conservation and development.
All right. Do I have a second?
A second.
Um. There you go, sir. Okay. Now, discussion on that. Any discussion?
The only thing that I see is that this exposed, increases the exposure of risk that a homeowner is willing to take on their own behalf. That's really the crux of it all, is that. If they're willing to get their, to appeal, to have their value raised, and they're willing to make that investment in their property regardless of. Uh, natural causes and everything like that, that's a risk that they should be able to take, they are.
I think, but we as a board. Have to. Part of our responsibility is to make sure that we are protecting, um, our shores and that we're following, you know. EMA and making that, I mean, that's our responsibility, right, is to do our due diligence.
Yeah.
So you're saying if they wanna take the risk, but really it's our job as members of this commission to make sure that we're not putting ourselves at any undue risk.
Well, we're still operating within the regulations if you know allows us to.
Right.
Yeah. Um, and one other thing that we, when we were looking at this, we did see is that, um. Many of the towns along the shoreline have similar regulation. Um. I think, uh, not everybody, but, uh, many of you.
Everybody feels like I'm very mixed. Yeah, Washington is definitely in line with, in line with us.
You're, I couldn't hear you, so I'm sure that didn't pick it up.
I thought it was very. Couldn't see something, it wasn't. I, I thought we weren't necessarily in lining with others, I thought it was a very mixed bag of the regulations, I, I just thought that, that, uh. Characterization of it was somewhat inaccurate.
Well, the characterization of all of them.
I agree, I don't think, no, no one's got a, there's no, there's no rule of thumb here, what I'm trying to say, so, okay.
Maybe she don't want that.
I'm not saying that. Uh, I believe Madison and Ocks, and Clinton and everyone is all fairly different, like there isn't the consistency along the shoreline, so I don't think they're driving, they're all stepping in line with other communities.
Well, that's not what I was trying to.
Okay, I just understood.
Okay, I, any, any other discussion? Yeah, I, I wanna get, I wanna clarify a thing, we, we. I think there's a conflict of interest with Dylan, bringing up this regulation and voting on the regulation. He gains from this, he's a realtor. So. I, I recuse myself of stuff, people say stuff to me, I recuse myself. He should recuse himself and the vote should be taken over again because he should not be voting on something that he's gonna benefit from. And that, and that's, I, that's clear in here, I clear in here. Well, uh, where is she, like, talking to me? Well, I, I was trying to get other people, because it's always me, it's always me, it's always Eddie Alram, it's always me. It's always me saying stuff, and I'm the bad guy. So I'm gonna be the bad guy again. I told him not to vote on it a lo- a while ago, I told him not to bring it up, he's also been told by other members not to bring it up, but he brought it up anyway. He benefits, that's like when I fought for the pools, you know, you guys, right, do I own a pool company? I don't own a pool company.
I don't get every listing down there, I.
Doesn't matter, Dylan, you show a realtor and you. You can't bring up things that benefit you personally.
Benefit me in any regard.
Okay, you're not gonna sell your houses, then they're making a, a commitment that you're not gonna sell any houses on the shoreline, okay?
I'm not gonna do that.
Why, why wouldn't it, why wouldn't it, you're not gonna benefit, right?
No, I mean, I still have to compete for the listing, I still have to win it, it's not even given.
If you don't understand it. And then, if you don't understand it, I'm not gonna explain it.
I get the point you're making, but you're not seeing my point, did.
Now I'll see your point, because when I, when I, don't, I don't, I don't wanna banter, I don't wanna banter, I'm just saying. You're, you, you benefit from this and we supposed to not benefit.
There's a lot of work that has to go into it before any potential chance of benefiting probably happens. In fact, this is more in, in mind, allow people to stay in their houses for even longer, to not benefit all of it.
You shouldn't have voted up, you shouldn't have voted up.
Was anybody else gonna bring it up? I learned about the regulation by the fact that I am a real estate agent, that it's prohibiting a lot of people to do things to their houses to update them. And forcing them to move in a very competitive market where they can't afford to buy something.
Yes, to me, it sounds. Has people spoke to you about not bringing this up? Yes, it.
Yeah.
Okay, then why do you think they did that?
Okay, um.
All right, I'm done, I'm done, if, if it's the chairman, if he does have a problem with it, then I'm fine. Well, you might, if somebody has, they would have to recuse themselves, and we cannot force anybody to recuse themselves. Nope. You can't for, for somebody to recuse themselves.
No, you cannot.
Okay. Okay, you can bring it up. Okay, if you've done, okay, but we, we, that becomes.
Or ask.
Correct, okay, thank you, all right. Okay, um, any other discussion? With that, I would, uh, like to entertain a, or not that, because I'd like to, uh, call the vote on this, so. Those in favor of this, uh, amendment to the regulation, please, uh, indicate by saying aye.
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 If I had, who do I get here?
We may need your roll call, just to make sure that we're clear of this. Yeah.
Mike, he made a good.
We'll do.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Would you wanna do it as a roll call?
It'll be just for, for keeping a lot of the little laser.
Okay, why don't we do it as a roll call, then go ahead and.
Okay, Mike Florio.
Aye.
Dylan Walter.
Aye.
Dave Mandel.
Aye.
Doc Flord.
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay. Ed Alvarino.
No.
Chinzi Latieri.
Nay.
Uh. Robert Porson.
No.
Brian Pellegrini.
No.
Okay, I'll tell you. Five, three, um, so if it's, uh, did not pass. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Um, I, I lost my agenda. Okay, next we have committee report, um. Okay, next, we have committee report, um, the PRCD subcommittee, uh, can you?
So, we've been progressing through topic areas, and folks should be getting emails when the meetings are happening, if you want it. You know, folks are welcome to come and listen in and participate, um, if you need slide decks, if you want information that's being shared, we can make sure you're. You have access to all of the same things that the official POCD subcommittee members have, um. But the members are sort of working on a pretty consistent schedule here to, to keep us moving toward our September document lock date and November adoption. So, that's where we're at, the, um, so, we are scheduling a special meeting of the subcommittee for seven PM on March twenty-seventh. Um, so just to put that out there for folks, because we're trying to get through enough of the material. Ahead of the April eighth workshop that we're scheduling, and so we wanna make sure that we have a couple of POCD subcommittee meetings. In between, but please, you know, mark your calendars for that workshop, um, until the six or six-thirty, we'll work on the final time of that. And it'll be in this room, and we'll have some interactive sort of pieces and some other stuff, so, so please take a look at that. Um, and my understanding is that we're now over four hundred survey respondents, so that's great, um, yeah, so it's still sort of steadily trickling, trick, trickling in, which is nice.
And I wanna stress, you know, try to be at the workshop, I know, it's not necessarily easy to do, but. As many people as we can have from the commission there.
When is, when is the workshop?
Yeah.
When, when, when?
We have a commission meeting on the seventh, and that one is offer first, so it starts at six forty-five, and then a regular seven o'clock meeting. And then seventh, and then on the eighth, we're back in here for a workshop.
What time, what time is that?
It's gonna be six or six-thirty.
I know, that's. Okay.
Just invite your folks over for a workshop.
Okay, uh, for sure, coastal resiliency plan.
Yep, so, we held the public workshop, it was well attended, we had about sixty folks participating, would be wonderful, yeah, it was really great. Um, and got some really good feedback, folks were very engaged, um, you know, I think I took away from it that we have a really. Interested and committed group of folks on our coastline who, who want to protect their properties, look at environmental balances. It was really, it was, it was a good moment, so that was, that was great to see, um, that plan is finalized. It, the final dra- the final draft incorporating comments from that public session came out this afternoon. Um, so we'll get that up on the website for folks to share, it's already on the Four Shore Coastal Resilience's website. But we'll also make sure it lives on ours, because that website will be going away in June, um, so we'll give you a sort of an update there. Our POCD consultant has that plan, we are working on how to best incorporate elements of that into the POCD to carry elements forward. Um, so we'll make sure that things are both well-integrated, and where you want to go farther, or do additional work or anything else to lay the foundation for future regulation or policy change. Uh, we'll make sure our POCD is, is dovetailed and it continues forward.
Could you either?
Well, email it.
Email or report, or email a link to the.
Yes, I will email you all the link. Report's huge, yeah, you definitely want the link.
Okay, thank you, um, next, uh, correspondence and bills, did we have anything there?
No correspondence, um, under bill, I just wanted to, to kind of give you a quick update on our sort of financial position, as we talked about, sort of saying, where are we in the budget? Right now, we are under budget for every single line that we're in, we have, uh, so we've been trying to keep things like supplies purchasing and, and special purchases down. Just to kind of be responsible with our spending, um, the, the one place where we will definitely get to the, the max of the line is. In our professional services, that's our GIS contracts, we actually have a purchase order out for that, so we'll expand that entire line. Um, and then the, the, the rest of them are trying to, to leave a little bit left for, to buy this to buy, so. Um, we do have a couple of, um, special GIS projects where we may talk about a transfer in to try to finish things out, like the address piece and all that kind of stuff. So, I'll talk to you if there's any need to, to talk about that, but, but right now, we're on track.
Okay, uh.
Uh, I am moved to enter into an executive session to discuss pending litigation and invite attorney Carol. Town planner Abby Piercell, zoning enforcement officer Kathleen Savona. And planning and zoning commission clerk, uh, Laurie Pasquarelli into the session.
We have a second? Second, thank you.
So, before we start, um, Eric, we're gonna put you in the waiting room. And then we're gonna stop our recording.
Yeah, so I tell you, okay, wait, before I stop recording, I have to say that it is six, uh, eight thirty-six. Okay, now you can stop recording.
Are we doing a short reset before the executive session starts, is that the case?
Yes.